So are we waiting for Anita then? Oh, there's Anita coming in. There's Crisso.
All right.
For a second, I thought he was giving me the finger, but he was pointing at his screen. Hi Anita, we can, how are you?
Good, great, thanks.
Good. So we have Pat on the phone. In case you're wondering who that is, she's running a little behind, she's on her way home. So it looks like we've got everybody here. Obviously, we're missing Mark Segantaller, it's sad to see him leave the board. Thought he always added a good perspective. And raised some questions that maybe we hadn't considered, but we are still going to be thinking about recruiting new board members, that's something we need to be on. Obviously, it's a little bit less urgent than we thought because Anita is able to show up at, I don't know what time, four in the morning down under.
No, it's only seven in the morning, that's not bad.
Oh, not too bad, not too bad, all right.
You can see it slide out.
Yeah, I do see that, yeah. Um, yeah, so there's not really a strong agenda today, but I think you've all seen the note from Jeremy. What we have basically right now is we're on a path as a planning board to to come up with some suggestions for recommended changes to the STR, the way STRs are handled in Camden. We haven't even settled for sure on whether we would do an amendment to the police ordinance, which would be a little bit quicker, or to go with a zoning ordinance. But Jeremy points out that, and rightfully so, that we're dealing with a new select board makeup with two new members there and two members no longer on the board. And in order for anything to get done, we are going to need generally some select board support. And so it behooves us to have a workshop with the select board to see where they're leaning. Hopefully, it's an open discussion where we can express with them why we're doing what we're doing and looking at the things we're looking at and hopefully, they're open to hearing that and then we can maybe take some direction from them based on where they're leaning. You know, in the end, we can still send anything we want to the select board, but the goal is to get them to send it on to the voters. So we want to make sure we work together in that capacity. And it also will probably bring a little bit more attention to the issue. Not as many people pay attention to the planning board doings as they do to the select board doings. And so if we have a workshop with the select board, it will put us on a little bit more on the map. And you know, as Jeremy has pointed out, other towns have seen a lot of activity around short-term rentals. Not, I mean, not too surprisingly, the, in many towns, they've still gone ahead with them and restricted them quite severely. I think you also saw the email I sent on Burlington and from the Vermont Digger article, pretty strong action there. So really, that's the main point of this meeting is to talk about that process and going forward and get some, I want to hear how everybody feels about it. And not get too mired in the weeds right now about where we are on the ordinance, although I'm happy to talk about it a little. What I'd rather see really is, we've already had Crisso volunteer to help put together a document, I think in concert with Pat to to sort of put out the ideas that we have and where we are leaning as a board, if we are leaning in a particular direction. I'm assuming, Crisso, that you had an opportunity to review the last meeting on YouTube.
I did.
So it kind of ended, it kind of ended with Pat mentioning that she was actually leaning towards supporting an outright ban on unhosed short-term rentals. And it's something I'd be willing to take up. I'll just express, you know, without getting too far into the weeds, I do think there's some advantage to allowing some, you know, number of, capped number of days, weeks of rentals to unhosed it so as to not completely outlaw or whatever, people who have unhosed rentals from participating in the short-term market. But my goal is to incentivize them to look at long-term, you know, regular residential, long-term leases as a more viable, you know, opportunity and better for everyone. So without much further ado on that, I just will go around and I'll just take some input from everybody. You know, mainly just trying to limit your comments to how you feel about the process going forward. And so vis a vis meeting with the select board, having a workshop with them. And I think circulating the document amongst the board members and comments can be made to that document, you know, before we submit it and it doesn't require, you know, necessarily a whole meeting to go over. But I'll yield the floor now to Crisso and then we'll go around the room.
I'm not sure why I'm first, but.
Because you're first on my, on my, on my screen.
Okay. Um, no, I think that it's, you know, anything like this that we can be as open as we can. And you know, this is something that's going to get a lot of pushback from people. And certainly right now, not just in Camden, but all of our neighboring towns are having people react badly to things that are created by the select board or planning board. So I think that absolutely we should have some workshops and I think now is the moment, is the great moment to get get them in board. I even noticed in some of the candidate questionnaires before the select board election that there were some comments from some of the candidates that they clearly didn't really understand all of what we were doing. Or some of the reasoning behind what we were doing, that was more on lot size changes. But yeah, I think the more we, the more we explain it, the better, also the better the policy will be.
Yeah. Great. Okay, Anita?
Thank you. Well, one thing is that I think as the Burlington document pointed out, it took them a long time and they they proceeded carefully and thoroughly as in taking this on by bringing people along. And that is going to be absolutely essential because there, I think there are a lot of people who do see the value in short-term rentals for their own purse. And so it's going to be a very delicate thing to move forward with. Bringing the select board along will be essential. We have a a way of operating in this town where some major work in terms of goals and priorities is done by the select board shortly after the, two new select boards members were seated, that happened last year, it's happening this year. And that concerns me a great deal because the two new members really, I mean, it's sort of inhuman to ask them to be, expect them to be as caught up on all the issues that the town has been wrestling with as they need to be in order to make the important decisions that they're making in the early part of their term regarding the following year. So having a workshop will be important to help them understand what's going on. The other thing I wanted to ask is when we're talking about, I think it's Granicus or the other companies that help, that can be hired by a town as we proceed with this and that help
Implement.
Help, sorry, help evaluate how many STRs are out there and so on. Is there a way, is there a way that we can get a handle at this time or before we proceed, an accurate handle on how many STRs there are? And is there any way we can get to what trend that has shown through, through recent history? Because that'll be an important piece in order to bring anybody along.
Yeah, we can get some data and I think I sent a report that they did, ran, I think it was a couple of months ago. Keep in mind, every time you run these reports, when you're running these firms, you know, it's constantly evolving, there's constantly new, new, you know, new rentals coming on the market, so it would be a snapshot.
And a summer, right.
Yeah, it would be a snapshot in time, but yeah, certainly there are firms that can do that and and are willing to come and chat with the board if needed in the town. I think this is a real town issue.
Well, I was going to say, it's not just the board, yeah.
Right.
The town, the town, open meetings with the town, a series of them. And I think it's, you know, the concept of setting a goal is important and that's why I pointed out that I like Burlington's goal of wrapping it up with having short-term rentals assist in getting some additional housing in place. So I like putting those goals together, I like stating a clear goal that, that we're talking around from the get-go with the public.
Yeah. It sounds all about right.
Yeah, and thank you Anita on, on the data issue. I'm trying to recall, Jeremy, I know you did send something, I can't seem to find it, but I'll look for it again. But I do think Anita is absolutely spot on. We need to start with where we are. And that entails knowing the number of short-term rentals in town, the number that are essentially unhosed, I mean, I really place an emphasis on that. If it's, if it's an entire unit, it's unhosed, that's my perspective on it. Now, we can talk about doing something like Burlington did, which is allow for a multi-unit, as long as one of those units is available for low income, then they can put it into the short-term rental market, the one other unit or something along those lines. But I want to focus on entire unit rentals, whether it's an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, or a, an apartment or a condo, or a standalone house or cottage. I think those are ones we want to make sure we get a number on. Chris, I see your finger, your hand raised.
Yeah, I just had a question, do we have any numbers on rental units as a whole in town?
Oh, there was some data. Go ahead, Pat.
Oh, I did one of those quick Airbnb searches just without any date range. And I said Camden, Maine, and there was something like 160 units. Now, that also includes Rockport, maybe some in Belshad.
What I'm, what I'm wondering though is if we have like actual, like long-term rental properties, that data in Camden?
I think we could probably piece some together, there's, there's some information, I think in the, certainly in the census and there's certainly information in the comp plan. I could try to pull some information.
Yeah, I mean, I know we, I know we have some in the, in the comp plan, but that's like, I know, 10 years.
Yeah.
I mean, it gives us, it gives us a ballpark. But I just think if we talk about where we are, that sort of range of saying, you know, here's how many people are renting in town, living in town in rental, and then here's a chunk of it that's getting shifted to the short-term market is part of the conversation.
Yeah.
And folks, I just want to take a moment, I happen to notice that we have a couple of guests joining us. We have Richard Bakary here and is there someone else on the phone?
That's Pat.
That's Pat? Oh, she's on the phone and still, still doing that, okay, that's great.
Double fisting.
Welcome, welcome, Richard, we did receive your letter and thank you for the input. We're still at the very early stages of talking about how we're going to address these issues. And I don't know when you joined because I, my phone doesn't show everybody. But our next step is actually going to be to sit down and do a workshop with the select board to make sure that we're on the same page as, as a group. We can get a little direction from them and see what they think about about short-term rentals, since we have two new members on the board and we feel like we need to be working in concert with them. So we're not planning to do a whole lot this meeting, but your presence is welcome. And we did, we did all read your letter. So if there's anything you wanted to add, feel free to jump in for a minute here.
The opportunity, I did listen to your work and your comments from each of you at the last workshop. Didn't see, it did seem based on the priorities that you were establishing of the four, perhaps three purposes of an ordinance of your craft that there's not really any room for the suggestion that I offered. And it seems like you're moving in a direction that would propose to the select board, an ordinance that would outright ban unhosed short-term rentals. So I do appreciate you reading it and considering it, I just hope you continue to consider an option that doesn't outright ban unhosed short-term rentals, at least of the character that I've described, isn't that story here? Give it a little bit more thought than if this has been early, maybe more credit, but I don't think they'll get it so far. I do have one set of questions that are pointed, they are questions nevertheless, that I'll ask you to consider if you're going forward. I, as a resident here, I feel the pinch of businesses that can't stay in business or reduce their hours and whatnot because of the absence of employees who can live nearby and work here. But I want to ask you guys, if you, if you really think that the houses that, that we're talking about here are going to be put in a rental market at affordable levels for the kind of folks who are going to be working in retail establishments and and restaurants, or if what you're, the unintended consequence of this is going to be is force people who are situated like me to sell a house that they bought. And considering the recent comps that are, that are being reported on Belmont Avenue, it's, we're talking about houses that are being sold for no less than $650,000 that is smaller than the one I'm looking at in my window right. I don't know that really what is, it's a realistic expectation here is that by forcing the sale of houses or having those of us who have already bought houses, put them in the rental market, if we're going to be renting them at rents that are going to be affordable for folks who are working at that level. More realistically, what you're going to be seeing is people forcing, forcing the sale of these houses and they're going to be bought up by people who live out of state and are going to be utilizing it three months of the year.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's a very fair question and is certainly something we have already considered. Part of, part of the, the logic, and I'll just be, you know, sort of, you know, I definitely want to acknowledge that we, we can't force anybody to put a house into the long-term rental market. Now, a house like the one that you're speaking of, that you own, could potentially, you know, I looked at San Francisco and I know what a tight housing market looks like. It was very common for a bunch of people in their early 30s who weren't married to live together in a house. You know, a four-bedroom house could, could house, you know, four, three or four people and with all of their income, they could afford it. And the other, the other, the other counter to that is that the, anytime there's a, a house taken out of that short-term rental market and put into the regular housing stock, whether as you say, it's purchased for sale or whether it's put into the long-term rental market, in some way, it, it tends to alleviate the pressure on the housing market by just that one house. And that is such a minor drop in the bucket, but we're faced with such a crisis that we're feeling like we have to do all of the drops that we can from all of the different avenues that we have. And that's why we passed those zoning ordinances over the, you know, the summer, which allowed for smaller lot sizes and greater density and more options for homeowners. So our general thought process is that the more options people have for housing, then at some point, there will be some relief in the pressure on the housing market. Obviously, it's not a one-to-one correlation. And not every single property is going to necessarily go the way we want it to. It's absolutely possible that somebody could buy you that house and say, I'm going to just keep it as a vacation home. My guess is with the, the market the way it is however, is that it's more likely that someone buys it to live in it. And if that's the case, that's hopefully somebody who was already living somewhere else in Camden and maybe then the spot that they were in opens up. Does that make any sense?
I understand what you're saying, I'll defer on the direct question. I, if you look at, if you actually assemble the statistics, the comps, I actually appreciate your point about every additional sale that's made, releases some of the pressure in the overall sales market or rental market. But if you, if you look at the comps, the statistics of who are buying these houses and for what amounts, I, you're not going to get to the point where in the village, these houses are going to be sold to anybody who is going to be renting them at the levels that we all wish there was more available rental stock for to serve folks who are going to be working in the businesses we like to patronize.
Hi Pat, I see your hand up.
Um, I think, well, Ethan, I know you made one of the points already about house sharing. And I know when I was growing up, like in my twenties and thirties, that was a popular thing to do. And we would have, you know, perfectly nice houses and nice neighborhoods. But when there was a group of us, it made it more affordable that way. And also, when I moved here X amount of years ago and I was looking for a rental, it wasn't necessarily an affordable housing rental, but just any rental, it was, there was hardly any houses out there. So I think, you know, there's, we have people more in the workforce area and then you've got people who maybe can afford a little more. And I think it would be great even that you free up houses in all sectors for potential rentals, because I know I'm not the only person looking for a rental who may have, you know, may not be really, really restricted on funds. But I think it's important that we have those types of rentals available in the area also because there aren't, you know, enough people coming in who can maybe afford a little more, but there's just nothing to rent out there. And in addition to the workforce, I think that's important to address. And I thought Ethan made a good point about every little bit helps.
And to follow up on that point, Pat, we're not talking about one house, you know, your house in particular, Richard, we're talking about potentially 180 to 300 properties in Camden that are in the long, in the short-term rental market that are unhosed. We don't know the number yet and that was the beginning of the meeting, we're trying to get a better grasp on that and we do need to know that. But to the, to the extent that, let's just take a number like 180, which I believe is probably on the low end. If there's 180 unhosed rentals out there, and short-term rentals out there, and they go back into the market, whether they're on, they're for sale or they're going into long-term rentals, that's going to relieve the housing pressure, that's going to help. It's not just one drop in the bucket, it's 180 drops and it becomes, sometimes it becomes more substantial. I used at the last meeting, an observation of a house that I happen to know about, that was renting for $1,400 a month, a two-bedroom house, that when vacated for the summer, turned into a $4,000 a month rental and has been now only in short-term rentals. It was, it was a long-term rental for a resident of Camden and now is not. And so that's one more house that's not on the, in the long-term available housing stock. And that, that to me is a problem, that the town needs to take seriously. And we're trying to balance everything that we can and your, you know, as you pointed out, Cape Elizabeth was very concerned with the quality of the neighborhood. And that was kind of the primary issue, it seemed like, with their short-term rental ordinance was to make sure that, you know, outsiders weren't coming in and ruining their, their quality of life. And, you know, we have some of that, I think, here in Camden, insofar as like out at the lakes, I heard GD mention that sometimes there may be some raucous parties. And for sure, having a butler who owns the house and who's on the property alleviates that concern to a large degree, it really does. It, well, the problem is, is that we're also looking, and I think from the board perspective, our primary concern is really the, the lack of affordable housing throughout the town. And, and so when we're looking at it from that perspective, you know, what would, what would we like you to do? We think it'd be great if you put it into the long-term rental market. Now, it might not be quite as profitable, but you will still make money and you still have a house that, that is, you know, increasing in value over the years. But it's just not, it's not operating an actual hotel-style business in a residential neighborhood. And so that's kind of what we're looking at it from that perspective. And it may be that we will not see eye to eye, but we are open to considering your proposal. We haven't made any decisions yet and we are going to be taking direction, you know, to some extent from the select board as well and, and talking to them about what their perspectives are. And, you know, they may have different priorities. So we're not, we're not anywhere down the road so far as to say one way or another, this is where we're going. But I think as you said, you've watched enough of the meetings, you have a feeling for where the board sits, you know, and this board. And, you know, I think that we feel pretty solid in those, in those goals and those, that purpose. But we are very sensitive to the fact too, that you probably purchased a house with the idea that you would have some expectation of income from it that may no longer be available to you.
Right, and on that note, there are a couple of other points I wanted to raise because I didn't hear any. But I, there was some discussion passing at the previous workshop where about the concern about lawsuits, the town, I don't think you're, I'm not foreclosing the possibility if we go in that direction. But really, I'm not the concern as much as some of these other folks who are really invested in this as a business setup. The, the prospect of regular regulatory takings, exposure by the town is a serious one. I mean, there are more, more sets of exposure that you need to worry about as well, but that's just one, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
From somebody who looks like me, it's with an out of state.
We're aware of that, but the standard, I think, for regulatory taking is no, no viable economic use. And we're not, we're not doing that to any of these houses, so. And we will be talking with, obviously going over any options with the town attorney. You know, I think a regulatory taking standard is extremely high. And, you know, you really have to, you really have to basically limit the house to no, no economic, no viable economic use to be under that. You know, we regulate all the time what people can do with their properties, that's within the rights of the zoning ordinances and that sort of thing. So, you know, there's, there's a way to look at it, that people operating a, a short-term rental in a residential neighborhood without a permit, you know, essentially are not, it's not a permitted use. There's no, there's no listing in the, in the ordinance for, other than the exception for the Airbnbs and Home stays, you know, for people to be doing short-term rentals. Now, there is some argument that, you know, we do allow for, you know, seven-day stays and things like that. But it's not specifically permitted in the ordinance, as far as I'm concerned. And so anybody who ventures into that without, you know, without a permit, you know, even though there's no permit that we offer for that, and I understand the sort of the ridiculousness of that argument. But, I mean, it's, it's not a permitted use per se. And so there's like this kind of, you know, gray area that we're in. And we're trying to figure out what's best for the town of Camden as a whole. And we're one of those people. Yeah.
Um, I just, I just wanted to sort of want to pause us for a second because I think this is exactly kind of why we want to have a workshop with select board and more.
Yeah.
And not to disrespect Mr. Thackeray, right? Like, I'm very happy to have input. I think we all appreciate input. I just don't want us to keep going down this tonight when we're going to go through it again if we have a public workshop with the select board. Because I think we're going to have a lot of these same conversations as people, sort of as we've said earlier, like as each person starts to pay attention to what we're doing, they're to ask a lot of the same questions. So I just don't, I want us to sort of be cognizant of not, we were saying that what we were trying to do was take our next step on process tonight. That was the, kind of the goal tonight.
That's a great point, Crisso, and I'm glad that you, you brought it up because we really do want to be, you know, open to hearing everybody's perspective. And, and so, Richard, I would, you know, just, I would invite you to show up to the next meeting. It may be in person. The select board tends to meet in person. It may be on Zoom, but we will certainly notice it. And we will be, you know, bringing up these issues with the select board and, and they may be more, maybe more open to your, your, your perspective. And, and so it, we're going to find a balance here that, that hopefully works. But we don't have a, we don't have a, a set path just yet. And, you know, we are looking at all the options. And, you know, the, from, from a board perspective right now, we've looked at, you know, allowing, you know, one, one number that was thrown out was six weeks in the summer or whatever year, time of year, somebody with an unhosed rental wants to put it on the market short-term for six weeks is a, a number we've considered. We haven't come up with any absolute, you know, definite caps or bans or anything. And so the next step for this group is to talk to the select board and see what, where they're at and also take as much public input as we can get. And, you know, from a planning board perspective, we're often disappointed we don't get more input and it's, be careful what you wish for, I'm sure. But, you know, the, the, the lack of, you know, civic engagement is, is kind of distressful because we, we do look for, we want to, we want to hear from everybody and we want to make sure that we do hear from as many people as possible. So, again, really appreciate you coming in and I would invite you to the next session. We don't have that scheduled yet, but we will definitely be noticing it. Anita, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to, well, first of all, support that, I think it was Pat who mentioned that people do get together and rent a place together. That, my son did that in Oakland. And he and seven or eight friends rented a, a mansion of a house with an exquisite view of the bay. And they lived there happily for a number of years. It made it affordable for everybody and, and it was kind of like a fraternity or whatever. So yes, that is possible. I wanted to ask, first of all, I'm very sympathetic with Mr. Thackeray's situation because he and his neighbor got together and rented a house and saw an opportunity and made a plan. And then, and then all of a sudden, very shortly thereafter, he's faced with, with this situation. So I really empathize with what he's looking at. But I, I wanted to know if, Mr. Thackeray, if, if, well, I won't ask you why you and your neighbor got together and bought the, the house in between, but unless you want to offer that. But, but I, I do want to know what you, knowing what we're facing in terms of our suggestion and if you were to see, just, you know, if another house down the road or around the corner or somewhere else in town that had been lived in by a family was also bought by one or more entities to be short-term rental, what, what would you propose that we do about that as a town in order to assure that there are rentals available more long-term?
You all are the members. I'm just the guest. I'm just the chairing board, so I'm sorry. Mr. Martin, go ahead.
I, okay, I was just asking those questions of Mr. Thackeray, but Jeremy, did you want to, or Ethan, did you?
No, I was just trying to, I was trying to stay, trying to keep this where we were going and not getting into the weeds on all of these questions. Because I think what the, what we need to do now is summarize everything we've done and Crisso's volunteered to do it. And I think summarize even the comments that Mr. Thackeray said today, because these are important questions. We have unhosed and short-term registration ordinance currently in place. Mr. Thackeray has a permit for it. He's doing everything by the books right now, right? There are others, many out there that don't. And so we have an existing ordinance. Mr. Thackeray's complying with the ordinance right now. So I think it's just important, I, you know, I'm glad you both bring up permitting and your registration and the ordinance. That's important. So I think we just need to keep the, the conversation going down the road of, or summarizing all of these discussions, get it into a document and then have these conversations open, because these are all going to be itemized bullets, I believe, in that summary. And there will be talking points from both sides on all of these issues. And we should let them air in the forum that they can be aired where everyone is hearing, everyone's listening. I think the public's involved. At least they're aware of it. And, you know, the use question is a very valid use question. And, and the town attorney and I have been talking about it because these homes, and I'm just, I'm not going there. This is just for trying to round out this conversation so we can just move on. Is that these homes are, this is a single-family home. That's what it is. It's a dwelling unit, single-family dwelling unit as defined. That's what it is, is, right? There are rooming houses, which are, you rent to three people or more or usually for more than two weeks. But if you look at the life safety code, it says transient guests, transient visitors, I believe. So there's a lot to look at. And because, you know, we've got different legal perspectives, Mr. Thackeray speaking what he is and Ethan talking what he is, there's, there's a lot of case law on this stuff out there. There's a lot of ordinance out there and lots of communities grandfather those that, you know, that have complied. Even though it's been iffy and wishy-washy on whether these things are even legal in any of these communities. When you look at zoning and land use and life safety code definition. So rounding that conversation off, I don't want to get into the weeds on any of it anymore. I think we need to, Ethan, just organize this, you know, into a summary document. We can get it out there. We can, we can review it in a couple of weeks if that's what it takes. And then we could put it up on the website. We can have, start getting this word out and have this conversation exposed out into the community because everyone has a perspective on it. And the 185 homes, I think that is probably low by a matter of, you know, it's probably seven or 600 or 400 homes that are being rented, dwelling units seasonally in Camden. So it's important to, you know, engage this conversation. People are doing what Mr. Thackeray's doing. People are doing what Anita is doing, you know, I mean, with her home. I know it's not short-term, but she's renting it while she's away and there's opportunity for that. People benefit from renting homes, their home. They go away for the summer, you know, helps them pay taxes. There's all of these issues and that's what we've discussed. We just need to summarize it and get that document done in the next couple of weeks, hopefully. And then we can schedule something with the select board. Does that sound good?
Yeah, that, that sounds like the, the path that we all want to follow here. So thanks, Jeremy, for bringing that all around full circle. Does anybody else have anything they want to add beyond Jeremy's great conclusion?
I think that sounds great. Okay.
Okay. So Crisso, I'm assuming since Pat is the master of documents, and I'm kind of looping you in with, with Jeremy or with Crisso on the, the summary document. Are you willing to work with him on that?
Sure.
Okay, that's fantastic.
Yes. Um, I do have, well, I'm leaving on the 18th for a month. And the third Thursday in of this month, I probably won't be available to do anything remotely. Possibly the first Thursday in August.
Okay.
I will be, but I can, I, I will be getting email and stuff, so I can certainly comment on any document that may be going around after I leave.
Yeah. And for transparency purposes, that, that sounds good, Pat, for transparency purposes. Mr. Thackeray, all this stuff's obviously public document. You know, we're trying to just gather information. The board members have been just kind of summarizing what, a couple of them have gone out and sought information from other towns and communities and taught, and they've taken notes on those discussions that they've had to compile that information. And that's what we're talking about, kind of putting all that together along with the, kind of the summary of these discussions. Because I think that should frame the conversation pretty well for the town to deal with moving forward.
Jeremy, is this, is, this is a moldable document. This is basically a summary of where we're at, but is not necessarily exactly where we're going. In other words, it's something that we.
I think, I think it's, I think, I think it needs to be laid out in, why is there, what, what's the need? And that was already kind of laid out. There's multiple reasons. What kind of research? And I can work on getting data. We talked about data, I've sent, given you some. We could use that initial data. And then we could talk about, you know, what, where we went. We looked at other communities that are in a similar situation, gather, summarize that information and then summarize your, your thoughts on what, what our options are.
Right. And so, so to be clear on where we are so far, all we really have are Pat's summary of all of the various ordinances that we, that we have across the state. So it's very much a factual document. And then we have some discussions with the folks who, who are in charge of either, who are in charge of either promoting or implementing those, those ordinances. And that's basically what we have. This document, Crisso, that, that you're preparing, I think, should, should try to toe the, the, the line of, of saying, we have these options. And then, and then when we get to the select board, we can each speak to where we are on those options. Because I don't want to put a lot of opinion into the, into the, into the working document because it really is like, here's what Cape Elizabeth did. They banned short-term rentals.
Right. It's, it's.
Completely, except for if you have seven acres or you're in a butter.
Right. It's, it's a summary. It's a summary of the process and the results of what information we have at this stage. There aren't actual recommendations from the board at this point. But it's to get, it's to get the select board and anybody else up to speed of, here's where we, here's how we got here and here's what we have.
Exactly. And if anybody wants to, that workshop, anybody has the opportunity, any individual board member has the opportunity to then use their persuasive argument.
Right.
To, to their heart's content. And that's, that's the purpose.
Right. At that, at that next workshop is where we say, here's how we all feel, having looked at this. This is why we think X, Y, and Z. We'll have other feedback from select board and the public saying, you know, we really think it should go in this direction, we're Y than X. And that, from there, we then move to the next step of continuing to figure out what we want to do.
Will we add to that what we learned at Bar Harbor next week?
Everything will be part of it.
That phone conversation is scheduled.
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, Pat.
So, uh, so this document that, the final document that we want to pass along to the select board, is, is it going to be more of a summary, like you're saying, of the ordinances that we've looked at so far?
I think that's, that's, I think it's, I think what we want to do, rather than summarizing the particular ordinances, well, your document can absolutely be shared, right? Because it's a summary of the ordinances. What we're looking at is, here are the pieces that, that other towns have tried. It doesn't have to be a summary of each individual ordinance. Here are the types of things that other towns have tried. So here's how they handle unhosed and short-term rentals.
Right.
Some, some towns put a, put a absolute ban on it, except if you have seven acres or you have an abutting property. Some towns put a cap on the number of days. Some towns put a cap on the number of units out of the available stock that they will allow to be permitted that way. Like those are three different ways to handle, and some towns will regulate them flat out, right?
All right. I see what you mean. I see what you mean there. So it's really the, the types of short-term rentals that they've established or that they're looking at.
The types of tools, the types of tools available to us. And, and, and that, that, that's when we can get into a discussion on what the policy should be. Because, you know, we could talk about, for sure, I think it will include the, the things that we've identified as, as a planning board. This is the only opinion that I think we should allow in there as to what the purpose, what our, what our foundation is for doing this. And we've talked about it, you know, numerous times, but affordable housing is one, safety is another, you know, quality of neighborhood is another. Those are, you know, those are all, you know, valid, you know, reasons to support an ordinance. And we can certainly lay those out. But the, but the, the meat of it really will be that plus the, the available tools. And to see how the select, sort of like a, a litmus test with the select board. They did, you know, the select board, how do you feel about outright banning all
Right.
short-term, all unhosed and short-term rentals? And you have four members saying no. Well, then we've got some pretty good direction that that's not a, a direction that we can, you know, biably go. Because we really need them to be the ones to send it on to the, to the public for a vote. So we want to make sure that we have this laid out in as clear terms as possible with options and, and be able to get, you know, get to a working, a working position from there. Does that make sense?
Ethan, may I suggest, I think it would be really helpful to add to that document or include in that document whether the town that we're talking about, some other town that's put in ordinances, has had these ordinances for a while or not. And whether they have, whether they have changed or adapted or updated them as a result of the lessons they've learned. Because in Cape Elizabeth's case and in the case of many towns that Granicus and such companies have dealt with, they have seen a two-step process where ordinances are put in initially and then there've been some lessons learned and they've been adapted in certain ways that tend to be somewhat consistent. So I think that would be helpful. You know, if you've got a town that just put something in last year versus one that started in 2012.
I think that's a good idea, Anita, at that.
And we do want to learn as much as we can from other people who have, who have gone down this path.
Right.
That, that's very helpful. And again, thanks to everybody on the board for their efforts. Pat, for your collection of all the documentation and Anita for, for the various phone calls and contacts that you've made. And, and Pat for following up on that and Crisso for stepping up to do this. So I'm really pleased with the amount of participation and really appreciative.
Oh, and just as a reminder, you guys, one week from today at 11 o'clock is the Zoom meeting with Bar Harbor with the planning person and the CEO from their town. So I think I sent out the link to everyone. So, you know, feel free to join if you, if you want to or can't.
Send it again.
I think we need to make sure we don't have a, a full board attend that.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that gets to a meeting if we all.
I, I, I'm fully capable of, of handling that town staff to town staff if you want me to do that. It's on my calendar.
Yeah, well, Pat, Pat's going to be on the call. So why don't we have Pat and you do it, Jeremy? I think that works.
Jeremy and, yeah.
And the rest of us will sit it out.
That sounds good.
But thank them for the invite, Pat. It's, it's very gracious. It's just, again, we have to be careful about having a forum there.
Is it possible to, to, to view it or participate without actually contributing anything verbally, just to listen? Is that, is that allowable, Jeremy?
I, I would like to let Pat and I just meet with the town of Bar Harbor.
Okay. Well, good. I don't have to get up from one in the morning. I'm glad to hear that.
See, you should be grateful.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds good. Thanks, guys.
So I think we've got our direction. Does anybody have anything else they need to? I think we've got our direction. Does anybody have anything else they need to, to say before we end this meeting?
I think we're good.
Have you set another meeting at this point?
Uh, not yet. Mr. Thacker, we can, um, you feel free to reach out to me anytime too.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Take care.